We do have a quorum. We are a little late just for technical difficulties that we cannot resolve. But I think we're complying with state law and the spirit to continue forward. So this morning, welcome. Thanks for coming in person. And we'll hear from Clean Water Division on the stormwater rate study.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. I'd like to invite Mark Gasaway up to give our introduction.
Mark Gasaway, Clark County Finance Director. I'm happy to be here today. I know that last year there was some questions about how we go about the Clean Water Fund and what we need to do to ensure the viability of the program. And we've put together a pretty good team of people that are working on this issue right now. So we're going to have a presentation today. I wanted to first just explain a little bit about the Clean Water Fund. It is a bit of a unique fund for the county. It's what we call an enterprise fund, which means that it's supposed to be self-supporting. So it doesn't receive general tax revenue. It doesn't receive a lot of the typical revenues you would associate with it like a general fund, but it's fee-based. And so the fees that are generated from the program go to support the program. Now occasionally, there'll be some grants and some other things that the program may qualify for, but it's primarily fee-based. There's also a lot of legislation, a lot of technical requirements that the Clean Water Program has to comply with in order for us to continue functioning as a county, continue development and things like that. So today, we're going to begin the process of... Today is more of an educational type of a work session where we are going to explain how the Clean Water Program works and what its objectives are. And then we will set additional work sessions in the future that will give the council the opportunity to look at different levels of service that Clean Water can provide and the costs associated with those different levels of service. So right now, this is an educational opportunity, lots of questions. We're hoping that council will begin to think about how they would like the Clean Water Program shaped at the county. And then we'll come back later with those costs and those fees that may be associated with the programs as the council sets policy of how they want that program to work. So with that introduction, I'm going to turn the time over to the Clean Water Team, and they're going to go through the Clean Water Presentation.
Great. Thank you so much, Mark, and thank you also, Council, for the opportunity to present to you today. For the record, my name is Devon Rostifer, and I am the Clean Water Division Manager in Public Works. And for today's presentation, I'm also joined by co-presenters Jeff Schnabel, who is the County Stormwater Infrastructure Manager, and Andrea Logue, who is the Finance Lead for the Clean Water Division. I'd also like to acknowledge that we have other core team members here who are supporting the project. Mark Gasaway and from his team, Mitchell Kelly and Reed Richards have been supporting this work, as well as our Public Works Director, Ken Later, and our Deputy, Priya Donapal. Rod Swanson, our Stormwater Permit Manager, has also been involved along with Sherry Villafan, who leads our Finance Department in Public Works. And also today, we have Samantha Nakata from our GIS section, and her supervisor, Nels Michaelson, has also been supporting our scoping of this rate study. Next slide. So for today's presentation, we're excited to provide you with a short overview of the Clean Water Division, including some insights into a few of the challenges and unmet needs that the Clean Water Division is currently facing as it pertains to our staff capacity and funding. We're also going to provide some background on how the Clean Water Fee is calculated and end the presentation with an overview of our division's proposed timeline and next steps to complete the stormwater rate study in 2024. So to reiterate what Mark shared with you for today's work session, we are not requesting any specific decisions or input. We would love to hear your thoughts and questions, but really, our goal is to provide you with the background information and an overview of what we hope to achieve in the next six to eight months and where we'll need your input and decisions throughout the rate study. Next slide. So with that, I will begin the presentation, starting with an overview of the Clean Water Division. So the Clean Water Division, we're a small but mighty division in Public Works. We work efficiently with only 18 staff. So together, our staff are responsible for a broad variety of tasks ranging from stormwater permit compliance to water quality monitoring, administration and budget, capital infrastructure improvements, as well as Public Works operations and maintenance activities. Next slide. And as you can see by the bar on the left side of this slide, there are a wide variety of work performed by Clean Water staff, ranging from private stormwater facility inspections and technical assistance to HOAs. We also work on pollution source control and complaint response. We complete capital planning and project delivery, reforestation, contract and grant management, and our team collects over 1.3 million data points through stream monitoring efforts that help keep track of water quality conditions and stream health throughout Clark County while helping us to identify those non-point source pollution issues for correction. In addition to the staff's work in the Clean Water Division, I also want to highlight that our division has multiple service agreements with other county departments and divisions where Clean Water pays for additional staff to help implement Clean Water programs. So this includes service agreements with Roads and Operations to complete required maintenance and repair of stormwater facilities, including all of our required street sweeping and catch basin cleaning. Our division also partners with Public Works Engineering and Construction to complete all of the stormwater facilities, the construction of them and the inspection of them, including construction stormwater inspections. And we also work to complete engineering for stormwater project delivery. Furthermore, our division has an agreement with the Community Development Department for all the stormwater engineering development review and also for any code enforcement actions related to Clean Water violations. And finally, our division works with parks to help acquire and restore legacy lands, which are important stormwater capital investments that the county uses to help meet its permit requirements. And we also work with parks to complete vegetation management, including invasive species control. So as you can see by this diagram, the Clean Water Division's rate supports a large number of staff throughout Clark County beyond our division. And the outcome of the stormwater rate study is not only important for us as a team of 18, but also for the other departments and staff who bill their time to the Clean Water Division. All of this work is done with one primary goal in mind, which is to make sure the county is implementing all of the projects, programs and activities necessary to keep the county in compliance with the Department of Ecology's Phase One municipal stormwater permit. And many of you are familiar with the complexity of the county stormwater permit and how much work it creates for the county, especially as regulations become more stringent and burdensome on our already limited budget and staff capacity. So now I will transition into providing an overview of some of the Clean Water Division's current challenges and unmet needs and some of our deficiencies, starting with an overview of all the things that we currently do to achieve stormwater permit compliance. So the county's municipal stormwater permit is required by the Federal Clean Water Act, which is passed through from the Environmental Protection Agency to Washington State to the county for us to implement. And to achieve compliance with the stormwater permit, we're required to perform multiple tasks ranging from stormwater mapping and documentation, completing public involvement and participation in our capital stormwater projects, controlling runoff from new development, redevelopment and construction sites through permitting and through code enforcement, stormwater planning, and we're also required to implement stormwater management for existing development. We work on pollution source control to protect water from contaminants, and we also work on eliminating illicit discharge and addressing any spills in surface water. Also, we have requirements to conduct operations and maintenance and also to complete education and outreach. And as a new division manager, I am always very impressed by the staff and how much we do as a team of 18. And also, I find it very challenging as we continue to move our division forward on the leading practices. There are definitely areas where we can address and make improvements with additional funding and staff resources. And this is really important considering that we're currently preparing for new stormwater permit requirements that will begin this July 2024 for implementation over the next five years through 2029. Implementing these new requirements will require considerable staff time and resources. And some examples of new requirements that will take considerable new resources include updating the Clark County Stormwater Code and Manual by 2025, which is the driver of all of the county's development regulations for implementation by 2026. We also have new requirements to work with fire districts to manage PFOS, which is an emerging chemical of concern found in firefighting foams. And we're required to complete more robust education and outreach and technical assistance related to PCBs and old building materials. Additionally, we've been asked or we're required to complete better public involvement and engagement with overburdened communities, and they're requiring us to now coordinate our stormwater planning with other long-range plans in the county, including but not limited to the county's current updated comprehensive plan. Also, there are new requirements to map all the county's tree canopy and establish new goals and policies for long-term preservation and restoration of trees. And one of the biggest new requirements I want to highlight is a change to the county's current street sweeping requirements, which are expected to begin in 2027. Next slide. Changes to the street sweeping requirements alone will increase the Clean Water Division's cost by almost $1 million annually beginning in 2027. And that's just one of the new permit requirements. And currently, staff are completing cost estimates to determine how much it will cost to implement all of the new unfunded permit requirements, including funding for more staff to actually complete the work. And one final comment is that while our county is currently facing multiple new requirements, we can't forget about the old requirements that we must continue implementing, as well as the need to proactively maintain and repair our existing infrastructure assets. To talk a bit more about our existing infrastructure needs and challenges, I'm now going to hand it over to Jeff Schnabel. Thank you.
Thanks, Devon, and thank you, Council. For the record, my name is Jeff Schnabel. I am the Stormwater and Infrastructure Manager for the Clean Water Division, responsible for leading the construction, maintenance, operations and repair of our publicly-owned stormwater facilities and infrastructure in partnership with many of the other divisions in Public Works, as Devon described, with whom we have service agreements. I want to emphasize how important proactive operations and maintenance of our existing infrastructure is to the county, especially given the high replacement cost and value of the stormwater infrastructure that we currently own. As of 2018, we estimated Clark County had about $219 million worth of public stormwater infrastructure. We expect that that number is actually quite a bit higher than that now, given the latest inflation rates and the amount of development that has occurred in the last five years. Next slide, please. So the infrastructure that we own includes almost 12,000 catch basins. That number is actually more like 14,000 now. That was in 2018. So you can see kind of a commensurate increase in all of these. But we're responsible for routinely cleaning and repairing those. The replacement value is over $14 million for those assets, along with well over 600 stormwater swales, nearly 500 pond facilities, nearly 300 bio-retention areas and over 500 underground storage facilities that provide the required water quality treatment and flow control benefits to help reduce pollution and erosion in our waterways. The public infrastructure with the greatest value is the over 500 miles of underground gravity mains that we own, which are the stormwater drainage pipes that move all the stormwater from the area it's collected to the areas where it's treated, stored, and then ultimately discharged to streams or infiltrated to groundwater. As of 2018, we estimated that these essential pipes have a replacement value of around $135 million, which is nearly 60% of our overall infrastructure portfolio. Next, please. Oh, next slide, please. There we go. Oh, sorry. That's okay. So with all these assets in mind, it's important to point out that our infrastructure is aging, and there is a significant need for asset management programs to make sure we are proactively surveying, mapping and inspecting our infrastructure to help us prioritize the most critical maintenance and repair activities to avoid risks to public safety and health and also help us extend the life of the existing infrastructure. Installation of our public stormwater infrastructure assets dates all the way back to the 1950s, making some of our infrastructure nearly 75 years old. Now, we do have, as you've heard before, a robust annual inspection and maintenance program for all of our treatment and flow control facilities in the county, and that's all required by our stormwater permit. However, all of those assets are at various stages of aging, and many of them are approaching what we consider to be major maintenance intervals that occur at about a 20- to 25-year age. So those are coming up rapidly. Oftentimes, as you know, more proactive and frequent maintenance can help us to extend the useful life of public infrastructure. And deferred maintenance has the opposite effect, can often make emergency repairs and replacement much more costly than it would have been. Next, please. So at this time, one of the top priorities for our asset management is the underground pipes, which make up the bulk of the infrastructure portfolio. You can see in this picture on the slides you may be familiar with from the recent winter weather we just had, where we had multiple underground pipes in the county that burst in the city, causing issues to public safety. While that specific issue pictured there involved an underground water main owned by the city of Vancouver, hopefully that illustration is something that helps to see how important it is to make sure we take care of all that underground infrastructure. As of today, we do not have an underground infrastructure asset management program to visually inspect or refurbish any of those 500 miles or $135 million worth of underground pipes. So while they are out of sight, they are not out of mind. Our division's goal is to incorporate the development of a new pipe asset management strategy and program into the cost estimates that we bring forward as part of this 2024 rate study. Next, please. So in addition to keeping the current existing infrastructure functioning, the division is also responsible, as Devon noted, for managing and planning for new stormwater infrastructure as the county continues to grow. To help manage and plan for that growth, Clean Water Division supports our partners in community development and engineering construction to support stormwater development review and support inspections during the construction and infrastructure warranty processes. As you learned through the comprehensive planning process and housing option study recently, our county is currently expecting to have over 700,000 residents in the next 20 years. There have been significant changes to zoning laws to allow more multifamily housing, accessory dwelling units to be constructed to accommodate some of this growth. Now, with that increased level of development, likely there will be more staff needed to make sure development is in compliance with the stormwater engineering requirements, and that as new impervious surfaces are constructed in the form of buildings and roads, Clean Water Division is well-funded to manage additional stormwater runoff from those developments. And one more slide. Thank you. Some of the other challenges the county faces are regulations becoming more stringent year over year as water quality continues to degrade in the state, salmon recovery needs continue to increase. Additionally, we have climate-changing aspects that are increasing the frequency and intensity of storm events that we've already kind of seen, which can cause additional risks to bridges, culverts, more landslides and flooding, all of which we can help mitigate to some extent with better stormwater management. And with that, I'm going to hand it back over to Devon, and she'll cover a few more challenges from the division. Thanks.
Thanks, Jeff. Next slide. So as Council is well aware, another challenge that is a growing interest from the public and also from Council is addressing harmful algal blooms in Lacamas and Vancouver lakes. Historically, Clark County has not had budget within the Clean Water Program to implement lake management work because these activities are not technically required by the stormwater permit and have been considered discretionary. In order to increase our division's work on lake management activities, our division is seeking Council support to incorporate costs for lake management into the Clean Water Rate Study as there is currently no county budget for lake management activities. And it is important for our division to make these critical investments now in lake management to ensure the environmental, cultural, recreational and economic value of the lakes into the future. Next slide. So what do all of these challenges that we've presented have in common? The answer is that they all require more people to make progress. At this time, the Clean Water Division is operating in as lean of a capacity as we can, and we have a great need for more funding to hire staff to complete important work. As I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, our division currently only has 18. That includes myself. And to estimate additional staffing needs, we plan to conduct a full audit of the number of staff needed to meet all of our permit requirements and not just the Clean Water Division, but also within our existing service agreements that extend beyond our division so we can accurately incorporate staff capacity needs into the stormwater rate estimates that we bring to Council later this year. Next slide. Last but not least, a final critical need for our program is that we currently have limited resources for outreach. Currently, the Clean Water Division has only one dedicated staff responsible for all education and outreach related to stormwater and clean water. Our division not only has a desire to complete more proactive public involvement for our capital projects, we also have the need to complete more outreach to private landowners in our watersheds on what they can do to help achieve clean water, and we are always seeking to be more responsive and proactive with how we communicate with Clark County residents. Many of you attended our Lacamas Symposium back in October, which was a great success for our division. And in order to do more public outreach events like the Lacamas Symposium, more resources for outreach and education are vital. This education and outreach resources are also essential to help obtain public support for any potential changes to the stormwater rate so that Clark County residents understand how ratepayer money is spent to protect and restore the county's infrastructure, rivers and lakes for the benefit of people, fish and wildlife. With that overview, I'm now going to hand it over to Andrea Logue to talk about how Clean Water pays for all of our current work. Andrea?
Thank you, Devon, and thank you, Council. For the record, I am Andrea Logue, Senior Management Analyst in the Clean Water Division. Next slide, please. So as Mark mentioned before, in the Clean Water Fund, it's an enterprise fund. So enterprise funds are used to account for operations that are funded and operated in a manner similar to private business enterprises. And that means that the costs to provide the goods or services to the general public on a continuing basis are intended to be recovered primarily through user charges. So cost recovery is the goal. And for 2023, 79,309 properties were built. That was 3/10ths of a percent increase over the number of properties built in 2022, and approximately $7.6 million were collected in revenue. Next slide, please. So why now? Why do a rate study now? So there is a structural deficit, which is a persistent year-over-year when spending is more than the revenues that are collected. And then, so that means the fund balance could be projected to deplete as early as Stormwater fee rates were last increased in 2015. And so that has only been that one particular increase in the fee rate since 2000, which is when the stormwater fee rates were first assessed countywide or in the unincorporated part of the county. So development in unincorporated Clark County has resulted in an 8% average annual increase in the number of stormwater facilities, both public and private. The county staff are responsible for inspecting and/or maintaining. And so it's estimated 2,256 public facilities and 1,800 private facilities are in unincorporated Clark County as of year-end 2023. Next slide, please. So staff from multiple Clark County departments work together on the Clean Water Fee. In Public Works and the Auditor's Office, the staff there conduct six-year budget forecasting to monitor Clean Water Fund's structural surplus or deficit. The Assessor's Office assesses taxes. GIS uses the assessor's data and adds to it parcel data to calculate the Clean Water fees. And then the Treasurer's Office bills and collects the fees. Next slide, please. So it all begins with the rate structure. So how are Clean Water fees calculated with the rate structure we begin, which is that each rate and how that rate is applied to different land uses in the urban and rural areas. So single-family lots are charged a flat rate for the year, $47 in the urban area and $35 in the rural area. And stormwater rates are their per-unit cost for stormwater management. And the base unit, it's an average of impervious surface area of urban, single-family residential lots, which equates to 3,500 square feet. So this is important for fee calculation of non-residential lots resulting in fee units, which will be important on some follow-up slides. And the Clean Water Fee is calculated by GIS, taking into consideration land use designation, location in the urban or rural area, the stormwater rate, base unit. Next slide, please. So what is the current rate structure? So the land use of a tax lot parcel determines the assessment methodology. So single-family residential lots up to half an acre are charged a flat rate regardless of measured impervious surface on-site. Single-family residential large lots are also charged a flat rate, but the rates incrementally decrease as the lot sizes increase in acreage. And then multifamily residential lots are charged a rate per residential unit or housing unit. And then the non-residential lots are charged a rate per number of base units. Next slide, please. So now we see several... We're going to have several examples of how the rate is applied to different property types. And this first example is for residential. Residential fees are charged per housing or building unit, which results in fee units. In this example, there is one house on a parcel sized 0 to half an acre, so it is a designated single family, and it is located within the urban growth area. For the fee calculation, one house equates to one fee unit. This one fee unit is multiplied by the stormwater rate of $47 inside the urban growth area, and it results in a Clean Water Fee total of $47 for the year. Next slide, please. So then, the second example is for non-residential. Non-residential lots are charged by the amount of impervious surface area measured on-site. So impervious surfaces are hard surface areas that either prevent or slow the entry of water into the soil and cause water to runoff surfaces in greater quantities. These surfaces can include rooftops of any structure, concrete or asphalt paving, gravel and packed earthen materials. So in this example, there is one parcel inside the urban growth area with 581,444 square feet of measured impervious surface area on-site for buildings, private roads and other impervious areas of parking lots and walkways. For the fee calculation, the measured impervious area is divided by the base unit of 3,500 square feet thousand five hundred square feet to equate to fee units of one hundred sixty-six. These fee units are then multiplied with a stormwater rate of forty-seven dollars inside the UG urban growth area, resulting in a clean water fee total of seven thousand eight hundred eight dollars for the year. Next slide, please. So how does Clark County compare with their, their stormwater, our stormwater rate with other jurisdictions? So as noted in this graph, Clark County has the lowest annual fee rates when compared with other counties and cities in western Washington. Phase-one municipal stormwater permits have more requirements to comply with than phase-two permits. Next slide, please. And when comparing stormwater fee rates with neighboring jurisdictions, Clark County's rates are lower than jurisdictions with no permit requirements, and then two hundred nineteen to three hundred fifty percent lower than neighboring jurisdictions with NPDES permits. And now I'm going to, I'm going to hand it back to Devin to walk through our timeline for the Clean Water Division's rate study.
Thank you, Andrea. And thank you again to council for allowing us to come speak to you today to officially kick off our Clean Water Division's rate study, which is really a rate study that will impact multiple departments and staff and ensure we're able to retain a high level of service for residents and businesses in Clark County. Between February and March, the Clean Water Division plans to continue its research and cost estimates to establish different level of service options and other considerations to bring to council for you to make some policy decisions on what work the Clean Water Division will focus on and how the Clean Water Division will assess its fees. Some options we may look at are not only our rate, but also taking a look at how we assess fees to different land uses, or the average impervious surface square footage we use, and also maybe how we consider equity. And after we develop these different decision points for council, we plan to have another work session with you in April to go over these different options and to also point out what is considered mandatory and nondiscretionary work that is required for us to be in compliance versus areas where we have more discretionary decisions, where they're really policy decisions for work that may be important to move the Clean Water Division forward, but there aren't necessarily regulatory drivers for the work, one example being lake management. Our goal is to take that feedback on level of service options from you in the April work session to develop the final stormwater rate or rates, to come back to council in July for a final stormwater rate recommendation before we have final adoption of a new stormwater rate in August 2024, ahead of any, ahead of our budget season. So to, in order to implement a new rate in 2025, we need to have a final rate in place no later than October, so we can begin the 2025 fee calculation, as well as any code updates that may be necessary related to changing the fee. This will also give us more time to begin education and outreach to ratepayers to help them anticipate any new rates they'll see in 2025. We're also interested in hearing from council where you see important opportunities for public involvement, which will include bringing important information to our Clean Water Commission throughout the process. Last slide. So finally, once again, on behalf of the Clean Water Division, Public Works, and other staff on our course rate study team, I want to thank you for your time and consideration at this critical juncture, which will truly drive the future of Clark County's clean water work, as we not only prepare for new permit requirements, but we also prepare to implement important asset management and lake management programs that will help make sure Clark County sustains a high-quality life and community well-being. At this time, we're happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that in-depth presentation. I have a lot of comments and some questions, but I'm going to hold off and allow other counselors to start first. From the DIAS.
Sure. Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. I do have quite a bit of thoughts on this and some questions. And you know, and this is probably going to evolve during the process, but I think there, there comes a point of, you know, a balance between the level of services that we need, and there's kind of like this diminishing, you know, point of diminishing return, where, I mean, we could have, we could staff probably a hundred people in your division, and there would be, there would be work to do, you know, but it starts to get really down into the weeds, and there's not really a return on that investment. So I appreciate looking forward to that and hearing your thoughts on, you know, how you determine that balance level. And one of the things that I wanted to ask is, you know, we talk about equity, and I think there's, you know, I agree with, with this system paying for itself, with self-recovery on funding, but I think one of the challenges with it is that you become dependent on some of those fees, and so sometimes the greater good gets lost because of that. And what I, what I mean by that is, you know, I'm looking at the example that you placed on there of, it looks like a commercial property, you know, and they're paying seven thousand eight hundred and eight dollars a year. But my question becomes, you know, how can, how can we encourage property owners to properly mitigate their own stormwater, their own water? And, you know, when we're dependent on, you know, eight thousand dollars almost worth of payment into the system, there's kind of this discouragement to provide any kind of a benefit for people to treat their own water on-site. So my question is, how can we gear this to be, you know, the fee to be more relative to their actual impact, and at the same time, provide incentive for people to mitigate on-site rather than have our system continue to take that load? So I would like to see if you can look into that and have some suggestions, maybe. And then my last question, is this collected via property taxes?
Yes.
Okay.
Andrea, you want to take that?
Yes, it's included on the property tax statements.
Okay. All right. Actually, my questions weren't as lengthy as I thought, so that's it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
That's Marsha.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the great presentation. I think when you came and visited us before, I think intuitively, we could understand there was a need to increase the rates, but I think giving us really well-grounding information on exactly what the need is, is really helpful. You know, with the Clean Water Act, it's an iterative process, as you know, and the permit every five years, and with the monitoring as the feedback loop, that every five years, I think we could anticipate there'd be more requirements. That's just the way that it is set up. And, you know, a thought on fees, I've always thought it'd be better to take smaller bites progressively than try to stave off increases and then, and then, you know, maybe you're not providing as much service as you'd like to provide, and then come back, and then there's a big hit. So I think we're in the stage of there'll be a bigger hit than if we'd taken smaller ones. And I don't know exactly how to set that up, but I think it's, it's better for the public to get those smaller incremental increases. Related to the street sweeping, are the, is it the street sweeper itself? Is it requirements like to have more efficient street sweepers? Because I know that's a very expensive piece of equipment.
Yeah, it's actually, well, it's kind of both, because you have to have the equipment to do the work, but the requirements are geared towards the frequency of sweeping that will be required to do. So we'll be needing to make the rounds more frequently on particularly arterial roads, but also neighborhood streets, starting in 2027.
Right. Is there a strategic approach to that? Like, they talk about the first flush that can be a repeated first flush.
Yeah, yeah. Part of that whole process is developing a bit of a sweeping program.
Strategy.
A little strategy to, to kind of maximize our benefit and the timing of those rounds, absolutely.
And this might be a tough question, but I wonder if you have any sense of the overall contribution that stormwater has as far as water quality goes? Because I think it's, oh, it's just rainwater and just natural process, but how does it really impact overall? What's its contribution to water quality impairment?
I could try, and maybe you can help, Jeff. So stormwater, it happens in both the urban and rural areas. So when you think about non-point source pollution, which is everything that runs off of the land, rainwater is the main conduit to moving those pollutants. And you mentioned the first flush, which is when it rains the first inch after a long time and carries all the pollutants. And most pollutants are attached to sediment and dirt. That's why we do street sweeping, and we have to do catch basin cleaning, because a lot of those, especially the bad stuff, like heavy metals and contaminants are attached to the dirt. So I would say that stormwater, because it's, it not only is in our urban areas, but also is moving pollutants in our rural areas, is likely one of our biggest sources of pollution, especially since we don't have a lot of permitted point source facilities in our watersheds. Jeff, do you have anything else?
Not much, but they, that's a really good summary. I would just add to that, the, you know, the point of a lot of the, of the stormwater treatment and flow control facilities that we own or that are privately owned, the inspection and maintenance of those facilities, that's, that's the key, right, to trying to minimize and mitigate against that pollution getting into our, our streams. So without those treatment facilities, without those detention facilities to slow down the flow, you would have a much, much greater impact than we see. We just know that, you know, when, when we develop and when we have human influence on a, on a landscape, that, that there's really no technology out there to completely remove or mitigate for those, those impacts. So we are just trying to kind of make sure that we're taking the edge off and doing the best we can to, to keep our waters as good as they can be, given the situations that we're in.
Right. That's, that's great. I just think it's, it's sort of, it's not so obvious as an industrial discharges, and it's important that people really understand the impact that it's having. You mentioned PFOS, and, you know, there's another thing that's come up related to stormwater, and that's the 6PPD, the ingredient in tires that actually they've identified as killing salmon. Is that on your radar?
Yes, it is something that we are learning about. Right now, we are not seeing any direct permit requirements yet to manage 6PPDQ. And just so everyone knows, 6PPDQ is a new contaminant that is associated with tires. As they wear down, they produce particles. What we are hearing from ecology and the literature is that the main mechanism to remove 6PPDQ from the environment is bioretention. So more low-impact development facilities, which we are responsible for constructing, inspecting, and maintaining. And so as we continue to see more development in our land, you know, in Clark County, stormwater facility construction and maintenance is critical to keeping 6PPDQ out of the waters, as well as street sweeping, because the 6PPDQ chemical binds to sediment or dirt, just like some of our other chemicals that we're worried about.
Great. That's good to hear. Let's see, what else do I have here? Oh, as far as low-impact development and following up on Counselor Young's comments about incentivizing, so like parking lots, if there could be pervious surfaces, if there's ways for that to encourage people to, to put in some of those practices. But the level of impervious surfaces directly correlates to the impact of, and what goes into the stream, so it makes sense to calculate the fee based on that. And then I think, oh, I'd be curious to learn more about what you're thinking in terms of lake management, maybe for a future presentation. And I'd just like to, you know, I'm familiar with the Clean Water Act, and I know there are some, within the Clean Water Act, there's an opportunity for third-party litigation. So there, there are some liabilities if we're not keeping up with all the best practices in this, if, and usually it would be for some egregious situation. And then I have mentioned, I think, before, related to construction, stormwater, and the need to really continuously monitor that. Some of these construction sites can go on for several years, and I've just seen a lot of things that could be better as I drive around. Thanks, thanks so much.
Karen?
Well, I just have a caution, Billy, and that is, in the presentations, be sure that there is not a start point of, we have a team of eighteen staff, and of course, that's inadequate. That is not the start point. To figure out what is the right balance of staff and services is a good start point with an emphasis on services. But when the emphasis switches to, we have only eighteen staff, we have a department that does this, but it's, it's done by only two staff. Staff, staff, staff is not the start point and the end point and where it needs to focus most of all. That is something that can, that will flow from a discussion of services that are needed and must be rendered because of the requirements. But just a caution, be sure not to have the number of staff be your point of trying to convince others that more money is needed. I hope that that is, is clear, because it's, I think, a very important point for persuasiveness of where we go from here.
Thank you, Karen. An important message, and so I'm going to go ahead and kind of, I'll segue off of pretty much what every counselor said, because each has touched on a point that I wanted to highlight for staff. So the graph that shows us kind of at the bottom for fees, that's where I want to be. I'm not in competition with King County for raising fees. I think that's, so, you know, we see it in every area of our economy, but I want to know that we're doing things smarter and more efficiently, at least cost to our taxpayers. So yeah, thanks for that slide. That's exactly where I want to be, at the bottom, because in my mind, charging the least amount for these services is where we want to be. We don't want to be at the top. The real theme I want to make, and let me go back to what Sue just brought up, and it connects to the efficiency and, you know, most bang-for-all tax dollars. You said stormwater is a big problem. No, it's not. It is enormous. And it's, it's all about education. It's all about culture. Because our small staff and county shouldn't have to clean up after everyone else. Meaning, you know, everything's interconnected. You know, you look on any of our roadways, and I'm not talking about the I-5 corridor where you may have people driving through, but our rural streets, our city streets, our residential streets, where our local public is driving, there's litter everywhere. People constantly are throwing garbage out their windows. It's disgusting. We are not a garbage can, Clark County. So that's a culture thing. You know, what are we teaching our kids? That it's okay to throw stuff out the window? No, it's not. And so if we didn't have to pick up that litter, we can invest that money somewhere else. Animal feces, manure management. You know, we have a Clark County Conservation District. We have a poop smart program. That is a tremendous impact on our clean water. People don't pay attention to it. They take it for granted. Horses are beloved, and they can do no wrong. And, you know, you see them in stormwater runoff, ankle-deep in water, and they are doing their business, and that is ending up in our watershed. doing their business, and that is ending up in our watershed, as is domestic feces. That's up to the public to have a culture change to properly manage manure from all livestock. It's not just a farmer or agricultural issue. It's everyone's issue. You mentioned algae blooms. What's probably one of the biggest contributors to that? Over fertilizer. And that does come from agriculture, but also property owners that want to have their green lawn. It's an abuse of phosphates, you know, phosphorus fertilizer. People over fertilize. They don't pay attention to it. They just want green, and what you're doing is, you know, tipping the balance. You're giving it more phosphate than it needs, and it ends up in our watershed. It creates our algae blooms. We need to start paying attention on an individual resident. I'm just trying to spread the message here that our clean water is important, and each of us has an impact on it when we don't pay attention to how our individual residence or farm is impacting it. Just a couple of examples. You know, we're spoiled here. We're blessed by the amount of water we have. And oh my gosh, yeah, we have a lot of stormwater runoff. You know, the military community, the intelligence community tracks threats globally. And I can tell you from decades ago, when terrorism was just somewhere like number 10, water has almost always been number one in the world for potential for crisis and conflict. We're spoiled here. You know, when, when the state declares a drought, my neighbors say, ah, we don't have a problem here. Yes, we do, and it impacts our aquifer. Everything's interconnected, and just to get, I see Ken is there. You know, everything's interconnected. You know, I, I drive around, I see a lot of our rural driveways, whether they're paved or not, covering up and blocking our ditches. That's our main source of out in the rural community of moving water. And Sue mentioned salmon. We now pretty much know, I think it's accepted science, that tires, wear and tear in tires are killing. They're, especially, you know, it just kills our salmon. So when we block our ditches, and it may be an inconvenience, the stormwater runs over the road, it flushes all of that tire wear into our ditch, into our watershed, killing our salmon. So from small to big, I mean, we need to clear those ditches. We need to make sure that when we issue our permits for grading, that they grade properly into the dish, not into the neighbor's yard, which I see and hear about constantly. So I want to do things smarter. I want to change the culture to, to pay attention to some of these important things, because water is, besides air, is probably the most important thing we have in our lives. And we shouldn't be spoiled by the fact that we get six or nine inches of rain in the last month, and we seem to have too much of it. We need to manage it. So I'm hoping we can, one last thought. And Sue and I just walked a watershed project in Washougal, and it kind of highlights a couple of things. One, one of the parking lots they were going to address is a high school parking lot. You know, they have common construction, all impervious, and all, I mean, it's just north of Steiger Wall. I mean, it's in a confluence of important stormwater runoff. But I heard, I saw nothing and heard nothing about putting pervious, even around the light stanchions, which are, you know, it's just concrete. That could be pervious instead of impervious. Heritage Farm has a pretty unknown experiment station there for, and I think Public Works had sponsored it, that has, you know, four to six, maybe more, different examples of pervious solutions. And yet, as I wandered around and looked at that, I wondered, well, what happened to that? Where is it all? You know, all of our roads that we're constructing, whether it's in the median or by the sidewalks, you know, where is this, where, what did that experiment tell us on what's the best material that can be pervious, that can help in stormwater runoff? Because, you know, when you start amplifying something that's everywhere, it has a dramatic and big improvement. So, and then the other point about that tour that I saw, you know, I was talking to some of the water staff, and what, even though they touch our Lackamas watershed, they were unaware that ecology was just completing a study. And I'm like, okay, well, you have a small portion of this, but that, you are impacted by that. It was just, you know, we don't have enough interconnectivity by all of you to everyone else. And whether it's a biofilter that may have been failed on Lackamas Lake, there should be peer pressure between the counties and the cities. Hey, we're trying to do our bit. You need to do your bit. So leveraging, you know, and so that gets right to lake management, that's the biggest challenge, of getting all of, everyone out of their stovepipe, you know, because everyone's got underlying and overlapping jurisdiction, and everyone points the finger at someone else, and that's really your problem that you're creating. We need to all work together. So I'm hopeful that the state will address that, their state's lakes, and come up with a funding mechanism, because we can't afford it. Neither can CAMSS afford it. Neither can Vancouver afford it. You know, but our, our lake management is, just highlights the major challenge of all these overlapping and overlapping jurisdictions from state to county to city, and we're just not addressing the solution the way we should. So I know that was a big, long soapbox. I think the world of clean water, and our, and our team, we have really grown and amplified our capacity, and I'm hoping the public will join with us, and, and from your own household forward, in moving this forward. And to Karen Bowerman's statement, yeah, I'm hoping that $47,000 will go a long way. And it would, if every citizen did their part. So any comments on, on anything I just?
I will start by saying that we have another work session planned with you and here soon. I think next week, possibly, we're going to be moving. It's the interlocal agreement with Lackamas, with CAMSS. We're going to move it to next week, because I think Counselor Medvige's not available the following week. So we'll put it either out of work session or council time next Wednesday.
So we're looking forward to using that time to give you an update on the interlocal agreement and the work that we're doing to get ready for implementation in Lackamas. And then we also have updates for you on Vancouver Lake. I think Jordan shared with you that there was an RFP that went out recently to begin to implement the proviso funds that the county received for work in Vancouver Lake. So there is a lot moving and happening right now on lakes, and we're continuing beyond that proviso and beyond the limited grant funds to, to talk about and look at what we need to do as a county in the watershed, and how we're going to show up and, and participate in that process, and what funding we need to provide the services necessary to achieve clean water. And I appreciate Counselor Bowerman's comment about focusing on the services that we need to provide, not just the staff. So we'll make sure that we focus on the essential services and the cost to provide those services, and rather than just emphasizing the number of staff. So thank you for that comment. I do agree with you that continuing to provide landowner education is essential, and how we work with partners, whether it's Clark Conservation District, or the Watershed Alliance, or the Lackamas Watershed Council, continuing to find out how we reach those private landowners and educate them and incentivize them to do their part on their properties is one of the most critical, if not the most critical need to address water quality, considering the amount of private land ownership we have in our watersheds. So we're continuing to support everything that you talked about related to manure management. And I think some of the comments that Counselor Marshall made, as well as you, Chair Medvige, about grading permits in construction stormwater, a lot of those services are provided through our partners with community development and engineering and construction, which is why we're taking a look at what their needs are. Since we pay for those services through our service agreements, we want to make sure we're holistically looking at where there may be gaps and opportunities, as well as compliance risks, where we know there may be challenges with how we're, we're complying with the Clean Water Act, so that we're, we're building in capacity to address those risks, to avoid any potential litigation. We're making sure we're able to provide our development community with really great technical assistance throughout, as they are working with the county to complete their construction projects. I've heard Counselor Young, you mentioned incentives and options to, or coming up with ways to reduce the fee through implementing BMPs. And there are models out in, you know, across the United States where municipalities do that. So that's something we can take a look at. And I know some of those programs do require some more complicated mapping and, and staff to go out and inspect and verify. So we'll make sure that we're looking at that comprehensively and comparing what resources that would take to our current model. So I, I heard a lot of great things today, a lot of great questions for us to follow up on, and I think we're just really excited to take this and incorporate your comments and questions as we develop our different level of service options for you to all discuss and really start to pick and choose where you want us to focus over the next five years.
Super. Thank you for that presentation. We look forward to the next, and especially the interlocal with CAMSS. We are doing a lot, and thanks for your expertise and energy in getting it done.
Chair, I've got one more quick comment, if that's okay?
Okay.
Just really quickly, you know, I was, I was kind of stunned, but not really surprised that we don't have any asset management plan. And I really appreciate bringing that forward. You know, the second we lay infrastructure, we should be budgeting in for the replacement, even if it's in 100 years, 50 years, whatever, we should be budgeting that replacement. And so I appreciate looking at that. And you might consider separating the funds for existing infrastructure replacements, so that, you know, because you will start to build a balance. If you evaluate how much that infrastructure cost is going to be in the future for replacement, you're going to start to build a balance, and it'll look like we're sitting on a big pile of money, when it's really for things that we know we're going to need in the future. So I would say a separate fund might be considered, if it would be helpful. And then the last thing was schools. Can we educate in our schools? Just a thought. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. And I would say, just one final comment, asset management and taking care of what we have, and planning for and accounting for our future near-term needs for what we have is definitely our top priority. And Jeff is beginning to lead that work on building out the asset management program and looking at our long-term capital and needs. So that is something we'll definitely be bringing to you as one of the options for us to focus on.
Okay. Thanks for that. Ken, I assume you don't have any last comments? That your team covered it all for us. All right. Do, thank you again for everything that you're doing for the county. Do we have any other work sessions? So we're off until 1:00, when we'll resume with our council time, and I think we have a couple of executive sessions after that. All right. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.